Good evening, everybody. And I'd like to welcome you to our televised December Board of Education meeting. And with that, I'd like you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lynda, could I have a roll call, please? Mr. Bruder?
Here.
Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Here.
Mrs. Dorr?
Here.
Mrs. Glidden?
Here.
Ms. Leveque?
Here.
Mrs. McKay?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
And Mr. Votto?
Here.
So, eight members present in voting. Snuck right in, Mr. Votto. Good job. Thank you, Lynda. We'll now move on to our Student Board Representatives from Lyman Hall. I think we have a substitute. Grace, come on up. Welcome. How you doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Great.
All right. So, at the beginning of the month, on December 6th, our very own student Camille Henry presented at the State Capitol. She represented Lyman Hall High School and discussed a resolution on mastery-based learning. It was a great opportunity for her and for our school, and she did a great job representing Lyman Hall. Last Tuesday, December 13th, our Unified Theater put on their show Blast from the Past and had a bake sale to go along with it. The students in the club have been working hard for weeks to put on the show, and it had amazing turnout, and it was a wonderful night for everyone. Last week, Lyman Hall had their seminar for parents and students on how to interpret PSAT scores, which had a great turnout and was a very informative and successful night. Last Wednesday, December 14th, we had the culminating event for Toys for Tots from my Mrs. Lefon. And though we may have been able to beat Shanette Powderpuff, they did manage to take home a win for most toys brought in. But Lyman Hall is looking forward to a successful year next year. Our Ag Ed Winter Shop has closed, and the students did very well at raising money, selling their beautiful holiday wreaths and other arrangements. Winter sports have started up at Lyman Hall, including hockey, indoor track, basketball, and others. And already, our girls' basketball team has gone 2-0, winning against Macula in Guildford. This Thursday is our rivalry night. Both our girls' and boys' varsity basketball teams will go against Sheen, and we hope to come out with two victories. Our school store, Packy's, is officially open, and it's already had great sales and lots of visitors. Not only has it provided students with new sales experience, but it's also provided the rest of the school a chance to really show their school pride with new Lyman Hall apparel. This Wednesday, our band and chorus are hosting their holiday concert. And in honor of Lyman Hall's 100th anniversary, alumni were invited to come and perform with the students. All the students have worked extremely hard to make sure this concert is successful, and both students and teachers are very excited to attend this concert. This Friday, Lyman Hall will be having an ugly sweater day in celebration of the holiday season, and that day will also be a half-day leading into the long-awaited Christmas break. Hopefully, the students will be able to catch up on their sleep and be ready to return in January to start preparing for midterms, which will take place at the end of January.
As always, a lot going on at Lyman Hall.
Thanks, Grace. And I want to wish you and your family a happy holidays and a nice break. I'm sure you're looking forward to it. Oh, yeah, thank you. You, too.
Enjoy. Thanks. From Mark T. Sheen? Come on down.
Good evening. Sheen was quite proud of our accomplishments, the Toys for Tots collection. Toys for Tots ran for two weeks, and we collected a total of 557 toys. This is more than 300 more than what we had collected last year. One class alone collected 93 toys. We also had a Penny's for Patience fundraiser run by our CNA group with the help of Student Council. Sophomore career lessons took place from December 5th through the 16th. During that time, we also had our Fall Sports Awards. This Thursday, we will be having a holiday sweater day to celebrate school spirit for a variety of reasons. We have a doubleheader basketball game against Lyman Hall. We have our next blood drive, and the Students Against Distractive Decisions group is caroling at Masonic. Our sports captains will be attending a leadership conference this month. And at the next Student Council meeting tomorrow, our subcommittees will continue to look at ways to implement ideas that came from our survey to the student body in October. We will also be working on a video asking students how their thoughts of what it means to serve the country changes after getting to meet veterans and hear from their experiences. Going forward into January, our winter sports seasons will be continuing, those being basketball, hockey, boys' swimming and diving, and indoor track. On January 11th, during the Office 45 block, we will have a meeting open to the student body for students to give input to the Student Council. This is one of several ways that we have for students to give input. We will also be starting a tutoring program during Office 45, run through the National Honors Society, where the school library will be open for any students who need tutoring from their peers. Midterm exams will be starting on January 19th. And on January 21st, we have an ice hockey game against Lyman Hall, and we will be doing a Spirit Day on the Friday before that, January 20th. Next month, I will present with an update on the January activities as well as updates on February activities. Thank you for your time.
Great job. And again, you guys are real busy there at Sheen. Rajan, I wish you also, your family, happy holidays and a nice restful break. I'm sure you're looking forward to it. Okay, presentation of awards. Dr. Menzo.
Yes, tonight, we have several awards, and I'm going to actually ask you to come up. And I also would like to ask, when we're done with this, I do want to move one other activity up in the spirit of helping our students get home early. So first, we have the golf team from Mark T. Sheen High School. The golf team won the championship last year. They won the SEC Division II Champions. Unfortunately, their coach couldn't be here tonight, and their assistant coach couldn't be here tonight. They're stuck with me. And I'll just share with you that I played golf once in my life, true story, in Australia. I hit the ball, obviously, swung, hit the ball, and I hit a koala. No lie. I was not deported, thank goodness, because I had only been there about six weeks. But I did, that was the only time, and I realized that that was an omen that I probably should not be taking to golf. As much as everybody says that in my career, you should be playing golf, because that's where all, you know, superintendents do, well, this one doesn't. So I just, as much as I would love to represent you all as your coach, I just can't do that. But I want to call, call you up and give you a token of our appreciation. And then I do want to make sure that we get a nice shot of the Division II golfer of the year was Eli Dyer, and I just want to make sure that it was recognized. So Eli, why don't you come up, and you can help me out with this, because I'm going to put you to work. So why don't you come on up? And guys, when you do come up, if we could hold the banner to get this nice prominently displayed on TV. So let's see who we have here. Trevor is, Trevor Beal unfortunately could not be here, but I did want to recognize him. There you go. So congratulations. Yeah, Kenneth McCracken is not here. William Medalo? Not here? Sorry. Jacob, oh, yes, I forgot, because this was last spring, so some of our students graduated. Jacob Meany? Come on up, Jake. We'll mail those to them to make sure they get them. Congratulations, Jake. There you go. Matt Wilson? Come on up. And then we have the coaches, Kevin Ainsworth, and we also had Mark Powers. I think that might, that's different. So could you guys do me a favor? Could you just hold this up so we get this on TV? And I know there's cameras. Also, golf wasn't good for me, because it's a quiet sport. So why don't you come over here? We'll make sure you get in that. So kind of go right there, because see, there's a camera right there with a red light on it? So if you want to say wave, but congratulations. It was a long time in coming, right? The last time that Sheen won was over 30 years. So I was a teenager when they won last, and you guys were definitely not even in the minds of your parents. So congratulations. Great job, and it's a great banner to have at Sheen. I know Mr. Dirksen's here on behalf of Sheen, so he appreciates your hard work. And I also want to thank your parents for their dedication. It's a lot of time for you to be on the course, but also making sure you get to where you need to be, and it's a great commitment. So congratulations, and we're very proud of all of you. You're welcome. So don't forget your, yeah, oh, yeah. We'll take the, so that's yours? Yeah, we could mail those out. Now, this one's different. All right, thank you so much. Congratulations again. Appreciate it. All right, the next presentation, I have to go to this. And I have to just log in quickly. Okay. So at this time, I would like to bring up Brooke Johnson, who is one of our students who attends a school that, at ACES. And I want to call her up, because we're very fortunate to recognize Brooke. Come on up. Come on up. Thank you so much. Brooke actually, here, there you go. Excellent. Brooke created the mitten, correct? Correct? On the bottom? That then became part of a series of mittens that was put on one of their cards that they use as their holiday cards throughout all of ACES schools in the region. And I was fortunate enough, Mrs. Leveque sits on the governing board, and she contacted me, and she said, "You have to see how beautiful this is. You have to see how beautiful it is." And she said that I had to make sure that we recognized you, and I said, "Of course." I said, "'Cause we're so proud, I mean, of the artwork and being chosen to be on all these cards. You're a celebrity." And so we wanted you to know that how much we appreciated that and how proud we are. I wanted to make sure, and it was Mrs. Leveque's idea, she said, "You have to make sure, because it doesn't do justice having it shown here in a small version. We wanted to make sure we saw it on a big version, to make sure you got all the recognition you deserve." So we wanted to say congratulations. We have a certificate for you. We wanted to thank your parents and your grandparents here tonight and just say, "Congratulations. Amazing job, and we're so proud of you," and I know they're proud of you certainly also. So congratulations, and thank you so much. All right. Our last award, and then we do have a presentation. I'm going to call up actually Coach Skurzo, who is not only a coach, but also a teacher at Moran Middle School, where he teaches math, eighth-grade math. And he's also the coach of the cross-country team for Moran. And we have a very special award tonight for a student who was recognized for her achievements, but I'm going to let him speak to a little bit of those. Steve, you're never short on words, so don't play bashful now on TV. All right? Here you go.
This award goes to Elizabeth Brown. She's been a runner for me for three years, as a cross-country runner and a track and field runner. In sixth grade, she ran really well. She finished 101st in the state as a sixth grader, and that's a good accomplishment in itself. In seventh grade, she decided to work really hard over the summer before she came in, running two to four miles a day with her dad. And she ended up finishing eighth in the state in seventh grade. And she said to me, "My goal was to be in the top 10." I go, "Why wasn't it number one?" And she put her mind to it over the summer, between her seventh and eighth grade year, and she worked really hard during the season, and she finished number one in the state out of 400 runners. Elizabeth, come on up.
Make sure you repeat that. Out of how many runners?
Over 400 of the top runners in the state of Connecticut.
And you were number?
She took the zero off from the year before that she won.
That is awesome. Thank you so much. Congratulations. And next year, you move on to, yeah, so Sheen's credit for you. Excellent. Excellent. Well, again, congratulations, and thank you again to your parents, because I know there's a lot of dedication. Dad, you know, thank you for running with her. It's fantastic. That helped her out. There's always that motivation. That person needs to be motivated.
Oh, no, she did it all by herself. It was mainly internal.
Wow. As a credit to you, congratulations.
Yeah, well, your track and field team has been remarkable over the last few years, so we're very fortunate to have you coaching, and the prospects for Sheen are fantastic. So, Mr. Dirksen, again, take note. That's a good thing. All right. Yes, and then you're going to make that one adjustment.
So we're just going to move things around a little bit on our agenda. If you, on our agenda, 12.1 is mastery-based learning update, and we're going to push that up to now. So we have some folks in the audience that are part of that update, and we wanted to get you out on a timely, in a timely fashion, so we'll move to 12.1.
Of course, my computer is having a little issue. All right, I'd like to call up Camille Henry and Sidney Karim. Camille is from Lyman Hall, and Sidney is from Sheen. I'd like to also recognize Mr. Corso, who's in the audience, and Mr. Dirksen again. Two weeks ago, we traveled to the State Capitol, where we were fortunate enough to be part of one of 20 school districts who worked together to come up with resolutions that will be presented to the legislature come the next session regarding reimagining high schools. Last year, we were asked to apply, and we were accepted to be one of the schools to work on this as a statewide project. During that time, there were a group of teachers and administrators that got together to brainstorm some initial proposals, and then we met with our students, got their input, and then the two students had to present in front of a large audience of school districts and administrators and fellow students and teachers in the House Chambers. And that was a great experience for them, and I have to say, they did a remarkable job. As a result of that, when we got into our small group, the work of their work has now been fashioned into the next step and the next stage of the proposal, which Camille and I will be going to the House Chambers again tomorrow to work on finalizing proposals to go to the legislature come this term. So I'm going to invite them up to run through the PowerPoint for the board, because we felt it really gives a context for the work that we're doing in Wallingford, mastery-based learning that we're moving towards in Wallingford. We're not alone. This is, again, not a crazy idea that was put forth by just Wallingford Public Schools. This is an idea to truly change where we believe we need to be for our students in the future. So I'll turn it over to the two of you. If you can make sure you speak into the microphone, and you can click if you want to sit and click. All right. You could sit down at the table. They'll get you from the camera angle, so don't worry. If you want the handheld.
The day-to-day life of a high schooler is chaotic, to say the least. We juggle school, home, sports, friends, and for many of us, busy work schedules. We are all fortunate enough to go to wonderful schools in Connecticut, and I am honored to present a resolution to further improve our learning environment. My name is Camille Henry, and I am joined by Sidney Karim to present to you Wallingford's resolution for High School Reimagined.
Our resolution is number 10 and is as follows. Be it resolved that the legislature permit districts to develop credited community mentorship programs as well as inter-district collaborations that promote mentoring by local businesses for the purpose of sharing resources, guidance, and monitoring of such programs. This includes allowing districts to be flexible in the development of student schedules and the allocation of personnel. Our main goal is to give students a hands-on experience that will then transfer into credits for graduation requirements.
Our general purpose is to get students out into the community, working with local businesses to gain knowledge and provide experiences which would benefit their future without them being restricted within school walls. Basically, our resolution would push students out of their comfort zones and into real world, into the real world and community. How it works? For the time being, we do not have the authority to structure the complete idea of our resolution, but a loose layout could include requirements such as portfolios, applications and proposals, and anything else along those lines. Furthermore, an advisor could help guide students in the right direction for advice and counseling. Advisors could also provide standards and indicators.
The current situation in the Connecticut school system can occasionally limit the opportunities offered to students and the benefits received in response for hard work and achievements. One setback is teacher certification. Many career directional courses that are provided in the school are taught by teachers without the correct certification. Therefore, the students do not receive the credit. We do not want teacher certification to hinder the program that we are proposing. In other situations, some students are already doing internships or have jobs that pertain to what they may choose as an occupation, and they do not get recognized with graduation credit. Our resolution would be able to provide credit for internships and jobs students may already take part in. Something we see as students to be very common among our peers is that many students are overbooked and find it difficult to explore a career path and meet graduation requirements with everything they have going on in their life. We would like to ease the stress that many are feeling by providing students time during school for internships and exploration. Not only that, but we would like to expand the definition of the school calendar so students can gain knowledge and experience outside of the regular school day or school
How it would benefit the students? First off, it would cause graduation requirements to become more relevant to an individual's preferences, and it would also allow students to create their own flexible schedules, giving them a break with other graduation requirements that they may not have room for. Next, our resolution will encourage students to take up opportunities that interest them. This helps students close in on their likes and dislikes in the workplace setting. Lastly, and most importantly, the whole idea gets the community, schools, and local businesses all interacting together. Students are able to make important connections and meet new people.
Thank you so much for listening, and we hope you consider our program for the High School Reimagined resolution.
So as I stated, every school district had to go up and present a resolution. What I think some people might not recognize, they might think, "Well, we offer internships in our schools. We offer these opportunities." But there's a lot of red tape that the state provides us that we have to either cut through or work around. So what the resolution is getting at is the desire for the state to allow us an opportunity to move through some of these challenges that are faced. Some of the internships cannot occur at certain times. There is the credit requirements, all those different things that were mentioned. So this is a key part of one of our four focus areas as a school district, which is looking at the whole idea of moving forward with the internship opportunities and career exploration. So I just wanted to have them highlight their experience and what their resolution was, and we'll keep the board posted. But do any of the board members have any questions for the students?
Yeah, Jake.
Great job, folks. It was very well done.
Thank you.
Did you, by chance, look at other countries? See if any other countries have a program that's similar to what you're thinking of that we could maybe use?
We haven't done that yet, but maybe that's something to consider for a later time, to look deeper into it.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea to give people a general understanding of how it works in other places, so stuff is.
Yeah, might help us get it off the ground and gain from their experience. Yeah. But yeah, great idea. Love it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Camille and Sidney, you did a great presentation, and I'm sure it was a rewarding experience for you guys to get, to go up to Hartford. And, you know, a little intimidating, but good for you. Keep us posted, how things, you know, keep going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item six is our question-and-answer session. Are there any questions from the audience? Just give us your name and address, please.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Tammy Raccio, 123 Chimney Hill Road, Systemwide PTAC Chair and Parent. This evening, we didn't have a PTAC meeting for the month of December, but this evening I am before you to present Mr. Barkhurst with a gift from Systemwide PTAC. On behalf of all of the agenda items, hundreds of agenda items you've sat through, dozens and dozens of meetings you've gone to, I counted over six locations we've had meetings. You've traveled around to all parts of town. And as a parent, you've made me a better parent by educating me, by always answering my questions, by never taking offense to the number of questions, and it's been a pleasure to work with you.
Okay, having none, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for E1, Discussion of Acceptance of Leave of Absences; E2, Discussion of Appointment of Candidates to Administrative Positions; E3, Discussion of Appointment of Candidate to Teaching Position; and E4, Discussion of Tentative Agreement with Wallingford Public Schools Custodians Union. So moved. I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We're in executive session, and we'll move. Okay, we are back, and if I can get a motion to come out of executive session as previously outlined as items E1 through E4? So moved.
Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We're out of executive session. Moving along, can I get a motion to accept consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.20? So moved. I have a first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We have no items removed from the consent agenda. Mike, any correspondence, sir?
Yes, we have two thank-you notes from, one from Liz Brophy and one from Patrice McCarthy, thanking us for expressing our sympathy.
Okay, thank you very much. Committee reports, ACES.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, I don't mean to, there was one other thing that I would, I think, that Mr. Votto used.
Oh, you're right. I didn't look.
It's kind of a big one, so.
All right, let me go back and look.
Sorry.
That is a big one.
But you could say it, Dr. Menzo.
It's a car.
Oh.
So we want to make sure we formally recognize and accept.
Oh, okay, here we go.
The donation by Meriden Hyundai of the Elantra that's being raffled off, and it's valued at $19,110.
Very generous, very generous.
Thank you.
Thank you for catching that, Dr. Menzo. So, ACES representative.
Yes, the ACES Governing Board met on December 8th, 2016. The minutes of the previous meeting were accepted as presented. Student designers of the annual holiday note cards and T-shirts were introduced to the governing board. One of our Wallingford students, Brooke Johnson, was honored as one of the designers of a note card. The Executive Director's Report included a review of the report, "The Next Generation of ACES: A Collective Vision of the Preferred Future," by Susan Lettich, PKR Incorporated. The Governing Board approved the filing of the fiscal report, subject to audit, and authorized the acceptance of resignation. the acceptance of resignations, confirmation of retirements, leaves of absences, and the hiring of staff transfers, position changes, as detailed on the human resources report. The monthly early head start report was approved. The governing board approved the new ACES design plan and the ACES and the CASDD/EABI 2017-2018 school year calendars. The revision of the student school year for the Wintergreen Inter-District Magnet School was discussed. The revision proposed included decreasing the student days per year to 180 days. I indicated that I was not in agreement with this change. I voted no on the proposal since the original concept of this school included a specialized curriculum with an extended day and extended year program. However, the motion passed. Under old business, the curriculum instruction report was provided by Erica Forte, the Assistant Executive Director. Ms. Forte indicated that the next professional development day will be in January and will be building-based. Also in January, the State Department of Education CTAA unit will be hosted at Village School. The governing board approved job descriptions for the Chief Officer for the ACES Institute and Director of Marketing and Outreach. The governing board approved the ACES organizational chart based on the new design plan. Furthermore, the governing board voted not to fund the following positions for the 2017-2018 school year: the Early Childhood Director, an Early Childhood Teacher, and an Assistant Executive Director. The governing board also voted to eliminate the program at St. Rayfield's. There are ninety-nine Wallingford students attending ACES programs.
Thank you very much, Karen. Yeah, you have a question?
I have a comment on that.
Sure, please.
As Karen indicated, I also have a concern with the reduction of the days in the school year. I think it's important to point out that little by little, ACES is chipping away at what WIMS was supposed to be about. And, I mean, it does cost, how many students we send, sixty, I believe?
Uh, when the seats are all filled.
When the seats are all filled, at a cost to us. And I'm wondering if all of our parents who do send their children there are aware of the amount of things that are being reduced or changed, because it, it, it did offer things that maybe at that time, Wallingford Public Schools could not. I don't think that's the case anymore, but, you know, extended day, extended year were things that were appropriate at the time or different, but that's changing.
Correct, correct. How, how many students do we currently, off the top of your head, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
It's, it's under sixty. We don't, we're not full.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
I believe we're, we're in the low fifties.
I, I don't know what we do about that. I just feel, I wonder if our parents that send their children there are aware of these changes and how they're, every year it seems to be happening, and it's, it's, and it's basically to save money. I mean, I go to the steering committee meetings, and that's what it's all about.
I did ask if, as I know, I shared when there was concern about these days, that I did email and ask because there's a reduction in the school year, would there be a reduction in the tuition?
Right.
And I received obviously a response saying, "No, it doesn't work that way," but I just figured it was worth a, you know, yes.
Yeah, it was worth a try. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important that this is reported out during our regular board meetings so that folks that do have their children going to this particular program are aware of this, because, and I indicated at the meeting that I was quite disappointed with this decision, and that's why I voted no, because I don't think it was in the best interest of our students.
All righty, school to career, business think tank?
If I could just go back to Wintergreen Magnet School Steering Committee.
Sure.
Just that you know, we do have to come to the board, and I'll probably be putting it on the January third instructional committee meeting agenda to discuss the agreement. We never signed the agreement because we had concerns, there were board members who shared concerns about the agreement. We asked for revisions, they have not been taken into consideration, so the board has to decide whether or not to sign the present agreement. The present agreement, if it's signed by Wallingford, allows us to have a voting opportunity at Wintergreen. If we do not sign, we're still, you know, our students still go there, there's still our obligation to send our students, but we just don't have a voting voice, so...
And that's important.
Yes.
Because, you know, when I'm on that, a meeting there and they go to vote on something, I am always reminded.
Exactly.
You can't vote because da-da-da-da.
Exactly, so I, we'll bring that up. I, I think my recommendation is that we sign it so we can get our voice back in that regard.
So, I'm sorry, why didn't we sign it?
There were some concerns by board members that there was some language that, again, was changing maybe the spirit of the school, as was previously stated. That has not been modified, but unfortunately, again, we lose our voice.
Well, I wouldn't say we lose it.
Well...
It doesn't, it just doesn't count, maybe, but Mrs. Lavack and I...
Oh, I, I...
Never lose our voice.
I should actually, yes, unless there's illness, you definitely, there's no voice, loss of voice. But the thing is that, again, it doesn't count, and I think that's a really good point, Mr. Vado, that it doesn't count, which is, it's unfortunate if you set, if you go to a meeting and you're one of only three districts that show up consistently, and then if you don't have actually the ability to vote, it's, it's unfortunate.
Thank you for that additional information. So, school to career, representative business think tank?
Yes, our next meeting is after the new year. I believe it's on January 6th, if I'm not mistaken, and there will be a presentation on our career, from our Career Center coordinators, on the activities that we've done thus far this year and what they have planned as we move forward.
I have thirteenth.
Thirteenth is probably the second Tuesday.
Yeah, it's the second, it's the second Friday.
The second Friday, yes.
Yeah, I have the thirteenth on my calendar.
So, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. PTAC update?
Our next meeting is on January 17th, and we will be meeting, that'll be most likely a discussion of the budget, because we'll be presenting the budget on the ninth, so therefore gives an opportunity for parents to ask questions if they were unable to attend, and it helps them prepare their understanding as we move forward with the budget.
Great. Lyman Hall Athletic Complex Improvement Committee, I'm, I'm wondering, are we almost ready to get this removed as a committee report, or what, where are we on this mark?
We can remove that as a committee report. The project is, for all intensive purposes, complete.
Yeah.
There are two minor punchless items to the tune of a couple hundred dollars that may not be taken care of till spring, warmer weather, but it's, it's complete.
Yeah, so are they close to, are they at a level of retainage, or not, not there yet?
Yeah, there is some retainage, but I'll, I'll be signing off as soon as they give me the final invoice.
Okay.
Job was successful, everything looks good.
Okay, so can we say then, everybody's comfortable with the idea of removing this going forward as an agenda, committee report, excuse me? Very good, thank you. Plan of conservation development, yeah, you're still in a holding pattern on that.
Yes.
Yeah. Food services strategic plan committee?
We did not meet.
Okay. Item eleven is old business, which I do not believe we have any, and number twelve will go into instruction.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Sure.
Item twelve point one, we already covered, and item twelve point two, a presentation of strategic planning updates.
And really, this is just a point of information. We usually try to do this at instructional committee meetings, but unfortunately, there were a lot of agenda items, so I just wanted to share with you in your packet, you have the updates that we do every fall prior to going into budget season. These are prominently posted on our website, as you all know, so they're here for your review. If you have formal questions to ask, please feel free to reach out to me directly, and we can walk you through those, those questions and potentially answers to those.
Good. Any questions at this time? Thanks. Item twelve point three is a presentation of proposed adoption of revised policy 5113 regarding attendance, absences, tardiness, dismissals, and truancy.
So that one reflects new state law. That's the only recommended change, and the new state law is that it doesn't allow, after June of 2017, we cannot file a family with service needs due to attendance issues with students. So that's the new state law requirement.
Very good. Item twelve point four, also a presentation of proposed adoption of revised policy four one, I'm sorry, six one four six, graduation requirement standards of mastery.
So that one, you'll notice, it's the deletion of the note that's under physical education that exempts a student due to medical needs, so we've removed it from there. It is in the program of studies and will remain in the program of studies. This is not listed as a graduation requirement, as an exemption.
Okay, and item twelve point five is a presentation of proposed adoption of revised regulation six one five three A regarding educational field trips.
So this one, there are two changes noted. One is that it involves the four-step planning process for coordinating a field trip to make that consistent throughout our schools, and the second one is guidelines and expectations for chaperones where they're required to sign off on, that they understand what those guidelines and expectations are before they go on the field trip.
Any questions? Very good, thanks, Sean. Item twelve point six is approval of acceptance of a leave of absence. I make a motion that a leave of absence for Dani Almeida be approved without pay in accordance with the provision of the current teacher's contract.
I'll second the motion.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And item twelve point seven, approval of appointment of candidates to administrative positions. I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following candidates to positions of administrator as of a mutually agreed-upon date as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. The first is Lyman Hall High School Assistant Principal, Amy Holt.
I'd like to second, I'd like to second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Congratulations.
Mr. Shay, Amy is here tonight.
Oh, yeah. Congratulations, Amy.
Congratulations, Amy.
Amy comes to us from Newtown High School, where she's a department head for special education. She's also worked at East Haven High School, and she resides in North Haven, correct? Thank you.
Officially, welcome to Wallingford.
And Central Office Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Carrie Latour.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Yay.
Congratulations, Carrie.
Carrie is presently the principal of Rock Hill Elementary School. Carrie's been in the district for seven years. Prior to that, she was an assistant principal in East, Easton, Connecticut, and we're pleased to have her join the team. She lives with her family in Cheshire.
Welcome, Carrie.
Congratulations. You have two very patient sons.
Yes, very.
Hi, guys. Great stuff, huh? Congratulations to your mom. Go ahead, give her a kiss.
Dinner, dinner's on mom.
Give her a kiss.
Dinner's on mom tonight.
There we go.
Congratulations.
Item twelve point eight, approval of appointment of candidate to teaching position. I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following candidate to a teaching position for the 2016-17 school year, contingent upon proper Connecticut certification as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. Pupil Personnel Department, Special Education, Mark Tishian High School, Linda Williams.
Second the motion.
Thanks. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Jay. That's it, right? Yep, that's it. Operations, Michael?
Sure, thank you, Roxanne. At the operations committee, we looked at kind of the normal things, our finance, or excuse me, food service report, our financials for the month, and the transfers that were approved recently in our consent agenda. So that was, that was it.
Great, thank you very much. Item fourteen, new business. I do not believe we have any. Item fifteen, administration report. Dr. Menzo?
Yes, a few things to report. First of all, that the new calendar, you did approve it this evening, so therefore, for the 2017-18 school year, so that will go out to all parents ASAP, so everybody gets that. We did send out an email blast if parents had questions or wanted to come in front of the board to share that, their concerns or questions, they could do so, but again, now that it's finalized, we can put that forth. In addition, we also have set up some additional coffee times with the assistant superintendents and superintendent. Those will be emailed out, again, to, to parents in the community. We also have it on our website. We have a couple that are scheduled for January and also February, and we'll continue that process to make sure that we're accessible to parents, asking questions, getting to know us better, and bringing questions forward that they've already hopefully brought to the teacher or the administrator in their building. But again, an opportunity for us to be accessible to parents. I also wanted to let you know that there will be a letter going out to parents in January stating that we will be doing our radon testing as required by the state of Connecticut, so that testing will be done in full compliance of all the state requirements, but it's required to be done, and therefore, we need to move forward with that, and all the reports are on file at the schools that, that can be accessed if requested. So a letter will be going out through my office from Mark Deptula, our Building and Grounds Director, Supervisor, to provide parents that update, so we want to make sure, you know, everyone is aware of that also. I do want to, of course, wish everyone a happy holiday, and I look forward to the new year, 2017. We are, just as a note, parents, students do not have school on January 2nd, but our teachers and our staff is in session that day, so we do have session for teachers for professional development. We have worked on this a few years back in our calendar committee, and at that point, it was actually brought forward by the teachers' union to consider. It had been brought up a couple of years prior by Central Office staff, the Assistant Superintendent for Personnel at the time, to, to consider that, and we had done that on an ongoing basis. So I just wanted to bring that forward because they might, there might be some confusion as to who's supposed to be here. Parents, you got the children for another day, and we're looking forward to having our staff. We have some really great professional development planned. It went out to the teachers today. I also made sure I included all of you so that you can keep track from this point forward on all professional development offerings in the district. You'll note that we have a template. I would encourage you to click on the link that says Professional Development Template, because it ties all the professional development to the district's mission, the, the goals for mastery-based learning, and it talks about the goals of the session, as well as expectations for instructional strategies, as well as content strategies. So really trying to make sure that alignment that we oftentimes hear, well, what is, why are we doing what we're doing? Putting that forth on every professional development opportunity is, is really key to keep that vision going. So that's been put out today. We have a nationally renowned mathematician, or I should say, someone who not is only a math person, but he's a, he's an instructional leader in math, Greg Tang, who's coming to meet with all of our K5, as well as 6-8 math teachers, as well as interventionists, our special ed teachers at that level, really working and focusing on instructional strategies. So we're very excited, and I know Kristi Medansi and Sean had worked very closely on that, so we're very pleased that Greg will be in our town, working with our teachers. And then, of course, there's a variety of other offerings, of course, for all the other staff. And lastly, I mentioned the name Sean. I do want to say congratulations again, as we said once before, but I also do want to wish him the best. Today, we had a nice breakfast at our, at our office for the holidays, and we, of course, wanted to make note of Sean and the hard work that he has done during his years in Wallingford, and we know that Cheshire's in good hands. We know that certainly we will not lose sight of Sean because we're, we're in partnership with Cheshire, but we're very, very confident that he'll do a great job in his new role, and it's been a pleasure working with him over the last three years. So, again, congratulations and best of luck to you.
I'll just jump in, and on behalf of the Board of Ed, I also want to congratulate Sean, and thank you for your years of service in Wallingford, and we will miss you terribly. As Sal said, Cheshire's in excellent hands, they're lucky to have you, and just wish you the best going forward. And again, thank you for all that you've committed to Wallingford in those three, three years, about three years, three and a half years that you were with us, so best wishes, Sean. I also want to just take a moment and wish all our staff and our families and our community at large happy holidays, and I hope everybody gets an opportunity to get some downtime with family and friends, and look forward to a healthy and happy new year. And with that, I will give you our daunting January schedule. We've got quite a few meetings, mainly focused... We've got quite a few meetings mainly focused on budget, and some of these meeting times are truly placekeepers. We may not necessarily need all our meeting times, but we've got them on the schedule, so if we need them, they're there. So starting on Tuesday, January 3rd, is at 6:00 PM is an Instruction Committee meeting, which will be at our Board of Education Conference Room on 100 South Turnpike. These are all at 100 South Turnpike Road, except obviously for our televised meeting. Monday, January 9th, is our first budget meeting. Am I saying that correctly? That's our first budget? So that, if there are anybody, any individuals in the community that want to get firsthand an introduction and see it along with Board of Ed members, that's the meeting to go to. You'll definitely get an understanding of exactly the budget that Dr. Menzo and his staff has put together and is presenting to us. So that's January 9th. January 18th, on Wednesday, we'll continue. That's another placeholder for an operations meeting at 6:00 PM. Wednesday, January 25th, is our last placeholder, if you will, for operations, no, excuse me, that's not true. The 25th, and then the January 20, January 30th are also dates, all 6:00 PM, available for operations and budget discussions. And then, of course, our televised meeting at 7:00 PM here at the Robert Perici Town Council Chambers is on January 23rd. And so with that, happy holidays and enjoy.